Good evening. I'd like to call the order that March 8, 2016, Planning Board meeting. The first thing on the agenda tonight is the minutes from February 16. Mr. Secretary, do we have anything there?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of February 16, 2016.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is approval that we acquired for plans received between February 17, 2016, and March 8. And do we have anything this week? No A and Rs? Moving on. Next thing is a public hearing, zoning article for April 2016 Town Meeting. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Brian to... Well, we have notices. Excuse me.
I do that all the time.
Go ahead, Paul.
In accordance with Section 5, Chapter 48 Massachusetts General Law, an Article 43 of the Falmouth Zoning Bylaw, the Falmouth Planning Board shall conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 8, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. in the Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. 02540, to discuss the following proposed amendments to the Falmouth Zoning Bylaw. Article: To see if the town will vote to amend the Code of Falmouth, Chapter 240, Zoning Bylaw, Article 13, by deleting the following definitions: sign accessory, sign area, sign off premises, sign overhanging, sign standing, sign wall, sign window. Signs are no longer regulated in the zoning bylaw or do or take any other action on the matter on the request of the Board of Selectment. A public notice was issued on February 19, 26, and March 4, 2016.
Thank you. Referring to Brian, this is the Town Planner to lead us forward.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Brian Curry. I'm the Town Planner. This is an article brought forward by the Board of Selectment, the purpose of which is to delete definitions for signs that had been residing in our bylaw since 1992. In 1992, the sign bylaw was taken out of zoning and put in its own general bylaw. So this is the first step, and the many steps that we're going to be taking over the next year, two years, three years, four years, which will incrementally enhance the bylaw by taking it out, call it deadwood, and as time goes on, reformatting and redesigning the bylaw so it's more current and more user-friendly and more consistent internally in X-Turn. So this is the first step in a long journey. That's all I have. Can I ask any questions? The Board has...
I have a question. Why do you have to enlighten me on this? Why is this deadwood and no longer applicable? Has it been taken out of our hands by votes from Town Meeting?
Correct. In 1992, Town Meeting voted to amend the zoning bylaw on the recommendation of the Planning Board and others to take the signed bylaw, which was under zoning, and put it in a general bylaw. And the reason we did that back in 1992 is because there were many signs in the community that...the old AMP, remember that one? So at that time, the town put together a task force of business owners, Chamber of Commerce, planning board, came up with a general bylaw that essentially eliminated grandfather and allowed for a amortization of these signs over time. Took it out of zoning, put it in the general bylaw, but they left the definitions in and then took it out.
So the responsibility is the Selectment's responsibility now?
Right. There's a variance procedure, believe it or not, or a waiver procedure that is the Board of Selectment. The Design Review Committee oversees the signs, and the Building Commissioner is the one who takes the applications.
So it's not our job?
Not our job. Happiest day of my professional career is when they took signs out of zoning.
I understand. Anybody else? Yes, Ralph?
Right. I happened to come across the signed bylaw that was adopted in 1991.
Time flies. We have fun.
And for personal reasons. And so what I did was, I looked at that, what the current bylaw is, Chapter 184, Signs, and compared it to what's in the, our 240. And then on the, on our agenda, it said the definitions are sign, accessory sign, area sign, and then in the thing that Paul read, the word "sign" by itself is not in the article. So I wondered why that was the case. And then, as I went through the different, all the different, sign accessory sign, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them, I tried to check them off to see whether they were covered in the, in the new, in the new chapter, 184. And I couldn't, I couldn't get all of them covered. And I'll just, I'll just bring it up to you after we're done here, because I don't think it's, it's something that I happened to come across today, and the rest of you wouldn't be privy to. So I was just, in here, in the new one, it says, "Words and phrases used in this chapter shall have the meaning set forth in this section. Words and phrases not defined in this chapter, but defined in Chapter 240, shall be given the meaning set forth in such chapter." Well, if all of the things in 240 aren't covered in the new sign bylaw, and they're not on this article, the word "sign" is not on this article, I'm just wondering if there might be a technicality there. That's all. So I'll just run it by you after the meeting and show you, show you what I came up with.
Okay.
But the, the new, the new sign bylaw, adopted in 1991, is, I got it from the Town Clerk, and it's very, very concise and, and accurate. And there's one section in there under political signs. And that's why I got a copy of it. Thank you. So anybody else running for political office in the upcoming election might want to take a look at the sign bylaw?
What chapter? Could you give the reference?
Well, so we've had a public hearing?
You did.
Oh, public.
Public.
Public hearing. Anyone like to speak? So do I hear, we're looking for a motion to approve this, to carry it forward?
We're going to close the public, make a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah. Motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion that we've closed the public hearing.
Yes.
I just said that.
Here we go. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'll make a motion. I'll table this until the next meeting, until this issue is resolved that Ralph has raised.
We have plenty of time. Brian?
I believe the recommendations are due the 18th, something like that?
We're meeting next week?
Oh, could we?
Two days.
Could we do this Saturday? The judge has already said.
Do we have to?
Well, if there's an issue here raised by one of the members, I think we have to deal with it.
What if we make a motion that if we're in agreement with it, but if there's technicalities, that the Board and the Planner work out the technicalities, and it's approved if there's any technicality involved? That way, we don't miss this if they, if we need to get it, because I don't think we're meeting before this happens.
I withdraw my motion.
Is anybody else okay?
I'm just going to present it to Brian, and if there are discrepancies, I don't know, I don't know what the Board of Selectment are going to do.
Sure. I'd rather, I'd rather go over it, take a look at it. You can always give a recommendation on Town Meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that's the solution, which is always considered.
Yeah. We'll give a recommendation on Town Meeting.
Okay, good.
I'd rather do it right than anything else.
So, so you took it under advisement? That's all you had? Take it under advisement. Okay. We'll take it under advisement. That's fine. And we'll make the recommendation on Town Meeting floor. We won't phone it tonight. How's that?
Do you have the motion for, take it under advisement?
All in favor?
I move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Under advisement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just another thought on that, too. It's just say we run through all these matters, we find no issue. I might just ask some former members to get together very quickly. Lunch hour and vote for the recommendation.
Very duly.
Yep. Sounds like a plan.
Moving forward, Planning Board discussion. Applicant Cadet Enterprises, site plan review to construct one structure comprised of a Class IV restaurant with drive-through windows, donut shop, 2,278 square feet of additional space for three different retail office uses, total 3,169 square feet, located at 0 and 1184 Sandwich Road, designed by BSS Design, filed January 27. And for the applicant, Mr. Bunker.
Yeah, turn it on. Thank you. For the record, my name is Tom Bunker with BSS Design. I'm a land surveyor. We have with us here also Eric Aschander with Cadet Enterprises, Kevin Plauer, Ahmet Law Firm, and Andrew Girale is the landscape architect for this project, so he'll be here to answer any other questions. Let me see if I can...I guess it doesn't back up. After the last hearing, I was invited to talk with Brian about a few things that were brought up in the hearing. The main, main points being that we, what we had before is the fire access to the site wasn't good enough where before the, the fire truck would come in here and have to back a couple of times to come around. So I had to go talk with Mel Trot about that, and he was also concerned that the big semi trucks wouldn't be able to get around and through the site to the loading area. And there was also, at the hearing, brought up a question about possibly having a chain link fence along the top of the retaining wall here. So this, this plan has one major difference. In working with Mel Trot of the Fire Department, we went over a few options of getting people around, or getting rather the fire engine in, like creating a grassed driveway through this way or whatever, and he said, "No, no, that wouldn't work. It wouldn't be plowed," was his main concern. We came up with the idea that perhaps that the fire engine could come in this way, off of Sandwich Road, and this, this can make the turns coming in this way. So we worked on that idea, and if you notice, on the prior plan, there used to be, the exit from the drive-through used to go out here. And as we were working on the plan, we actually figured if this has to be here for the fire access, it's a better way to get out of the site in general anyway. Driving around this way creates possibility for some turning conflicts and things here, and particularly a semi coming around here might have to swing wide out, out of this entrance. So we figured that coming through here just can come right out, get them out of the site quicker, but also will prevent people from thinking they're going to come here and up this way, then out onto 151 right there, where if they come out here, they'll have to go up to the lights to turn left on 151. So in discussing this, you know, in-house and with Brian, we felt this would be better in this, in this location, and to eliminate this, for then, you know, the landscaping would be better, less pavement, for a host of reasons, this would work better. I can point out that we added the chain link fence here, and we also added a, a section of stockade fence in this location right here, realizing that as cars would be coming down here, nighttime traffic would be shining their headlights down toward that house. So we put, this house is lower, and this, this fence here will be up on the level with this, it'll block any headlights from that traffic coming down, down the road. So there was a change here to get the dumpster truck in better. We relocated the dumpsters and reconfigured that. Actually, we spread it around, added a parking space here. This drainage area got larger. This one got, island here got a little smaller, still have landscaping and fence along there, so blocked some of that view of the loading zone from the, from the patrons driving through here. The semi, I think, could pull in there, but it can also pull up parallel in this, this is the passing lane here. It can pull up here sometimes, and if there's already a truck making a delivery for any other businesses, so it can stop here. And this is, we had this on the plan already, some, a few parallel parking spaces here for some of the trucks that, so they couldn't make the turn to get through the, to the drive-through window. They could just pull up here and walk in the door. On the grading and drainage, didn't change much. Except I said that this basin got smaller, this one got bigger. Basically, the drainage is same, except there's no, no runoff from pavement here, but it will come down here and into the same, same area. The septic system was unaffected by any of these changes here. I have the detail sheet, and so you can see it here. We have the, the guardrail and the chain link fence along the top of the retaining wall in this location. So here is the planting plan. I'll move forward quickly. If you can see, this is how it would come out, and we actually want to keep this as an option. We're hoping that, we still have to go to a Board of Appeals for this, and in case they were to find some problem with having this as the only exit for the, the drive-through lane, we're hoping that you could see fit to say, well, that this option for the site plan would, would be, would meet with your approval also, of course. If we can't use this as the exit from the drive-through, it will still have to be here as the entrance for the fire, fire engines coming through here. So I talked with Brian, and I think that, you know, if you can see either or, you know, we'd like the preference to be this one. As you can see, there's a larger unified planting area here, and I think, feel that this overall is a, a better site plan for, for many reasons that I had gone through earlier. I think that that's, do you have anything you want to cover, Kevin? I think that's, that's what we have now, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yes, Paul?
Patrons are coming through the drive-through. They're going to be funneled out. They're not going to be able to take a left-hand turn into the parking lot?
That's correct.
Okay. Where's the curb cut for the current gas station?
Well, it goes up to 151 up here.
Right. There's one up there, and then there's one onto Sandwich Road.
Right here.
That's the same one?
It's the same.
Okay, it's the same.
So this is shared.
Okay.
This is a shared driveway all the way around, so people coming to Dunkin' Donuts can, of course, come in off of 151 and come around and in, and then back out. And of course, the gas station patrons can come and go out that way, or of course, go through the Dunkin' Donuts or whatever.
And there will be signage either on the road or at that entrance, or actually exit, so that people can't take the left-hand turn?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. I have that on the layout plan. I think it says left, well, for these people, it says left turn only. Maybe I don't have, I can, I think I have a sign right there, but I can, if I don't have one, I'll, I'll put a no left turn sign there.
Ralph, you had a question?
Yes. Mr. Bunker, is this lower exit one-way?
Yes.
So you're saying that you would propose that the fire trucks could enter the facility opposite direction of a one-way?
Ralph said that would be fine. He said by the time they come, that there would usually be some other first responder on the site that would, you know, clear the traffic for them.
Wow. Using the existing entrance, did you say that you improved the access to the facility so that the semi tractor trailers and the fires, trucks would not have to back up? Did you say you did that by increasing, increasing the, the, the exit?
This got widened.
Yeah. That got widened.
This got widened here, and it got widened out here.
So, so semi tractors and the, and the fires trucks can enter there and make a left turn without having to back up?
Not the fire. They're, they're longer, their ladder truck is actually a bigger turning radius than the semis.
Is the facility, is the facility high enough so it require a ladder?
Mel said that, you know, what they would do is put the ladder up and, what do you call it, a trench cutter, I think he called it a trench cutter, if there's a fire in the, inside the roof.
Yeah.
They put the ladder, they get people up there and cut through.
They use it for a lateral. They stick, they stick out over the property.
Right. Okay. I did a site visit today, and I found two test wells on the property. Could you point out where those are located? The test wells indicate that they are not to be filled.
Not to, not be filled without authorization. Those test wells were done by cadet or, you know, by, by a consultant.
Part of a 21E, correct?
Part of a 21E study.
Okay. That was not the assume-it flume test wells?
No. No, these were done specifically as part of the purchase.
Okay. So those are, so those are 21Es that were done by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. And then they will be removed then?
They will be, yes.
Okay. All right.
And I can't, I can't on this tell you exactly where they were.
Yeah, okay. It doesn't matter if they're going to be removed.
In this area here.
It went under the building.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, Doug?
Question. So when the fire, I mean, you've probably worked this out with the Fire Department, but when the trucks come in this way and they get to the front, what do they do afterwards? How do they exit?
He said they would leave, there was, said, how we had them originally coming in would be to come in this way, and they'd have to make a turn and then back and come, said, on the way out. He said that's no problem if they have to come and go here. They also, they can also just go, they can make the turn going up this way and go out to 151. to 151, and then loop back around, or they can come here and go partway and back up and then come out here. When they're leaving, it's not a problem.
This is a one-way through here, too?
Okay. And then on the, you added that space, it's not really shown, but where the four employee parking spaces are? It looks like three still, but that's just.
There's one here, one, two, three, and that one.
Oh, on the lawn?
No, right here.
Oh, excuse me, okay, okay.
Yes, Bob?
Yeah, I'm a little troubled by that entrance down south with one-way, and you're suggesting the party of the bomb can go in that way. Since you have a lot of room there, why don't you just widen that, make that two-way? Does that make sense? And then you just can't do one-way behind the building.
We have this whole.
This whole thing.
Running as a one-way here, coming down, especially with the diagonal parking, then you can't have people coming in. Mel did say, when I first, when I first asked him about that, he said that that would be okay, because typically there'd be a policeman or someone that gets there quicker that, you know, can clear the site, so by the time the ladder truck gets there, and actually the first person out is their blazer or whatever they have, or, you know, is a quick response before the ladder truck gets out there, so.
So guaranteed to be no fires.
Or that, yeah. But he said it wouldn't be a problem. I think he said he'd done it on other areas, where they come in, you know, an exit only to access the property.
Thank you.
Everyone have their say?
Let's see if we can, hold on, I'm sorry.
I think we're done for discussion.
Okay.
Wanting to close the meeting?
Sure, I will put this together as a formal motion for your next meeting, which you get the 22nd, and we'll work out an option there for the, on the preferred alternative and a secondary alternative.
So we'll close the public discussion?
I move that we close this hearing.
Second, Ralph?
No.
You in favor?
No, I'm.
No questions, sorry, I didn't.
Further discussion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, right. The handicap places are, where are they located, Mr. Bunker?
Two of them, right here.
Okay, I see them there. And there are no crosswalks from the parking on the east side over to the building, right?
From here over, no.
Right, okay. All right, that's all, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Close the second? All in favor?
Aye.
All set, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's start it. This one's going to be interesting. This is 10 Waters Edge restrictive homesite area revision. It's something I'm not familiar with, so I'll look to our planner to bring this forward.
I'll allow the applicant to explain their petition first.
Okay.
They always get in the batter's box first. Let me see if I can find, there's an easel behind.
We can shut this off, can't we?
Yeah, I think we're done.
My name is Chris Harris, I'm an architect with Salt Architecture here in Falmouth, representing the homeowners at 10 Waters Edge. A few years ago, they hired us to do some.
Could you use the microphone?
Sure, sorry. Some work at the.
It comes off if you want. Pick it up and wipe it.
Rear of the property to reconfigure some decks and do some other work on this side of the house. But at the time, it came to our attention through the surveyor that the house was not conforming to the original homesite area, which was part of the subdivision plan, as I understand it. And so at that point, they made the decision that they'd like to bring the house into compliance. They bought the house in 2011, I think it was built in 1994, thereabouts. And part of that process was that they knew in the future that they might potentially want to do some work on the front of the house. And knowing that the house was not complying to the homesite area as it was originally built, they were looking for ways to bring it into compliance. And so what we're proposing is to modify the area in such a way as to bring the front of the house, so right now, the garage that goes beyond the original area, but we were proposing to bring in both sides. One side, we're going to bring in three feet, the other side, two feet, in exchange for being able to push the front area just beyond the garage, thereby bringing the house into compliance. So that's, that's really it in terms of, you know, what they're hoping to do.
I just see there's a slight increase in the homestead area.
That's correct. It's about.
300 feet, square feet or something.
Just over 100 feet.
100 square feet.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is.
I mean, there is a little room on each side, you can see, on the, this side here, it starts to cut up what's a timber planter, and then on the other side, we're getting close to their existing death line, so that's kind of how we approached it. We were just trying to give a little on each side without really pinching that existing structure.
Yes, Bob?
Brian, can you explain what the homestead area is?
Yeah.
This is 30 years or something.
I couldn't find it when I tried to look it up. This is all news me, and Brian said he would enlighten us on this fashion.
So when the planning board of 1986, some 30 years ago, approved this area, they imposed a condition, and one of the conditions of the board was that the residences need to be constructed in this, now it's a building envelope, for whatever purposes at that time compelled them, my sense is they wanted them to stay away from the pond 100 feet or whatever my bid. The applicant descended, accepted the condition, it becomes part of the special permit. And we've seen this before, a few of these subdivisions do reside here in town. Valley Need, the special permit section of Valley Need has these building envelopes. But what happens sometimes is, you know, you set the corner and sometimes the contractor's not aware, or there's an encroachment, just like we see when someone crosses a lot lot. You see that a lot of horizontal control sometimes. So the architect is asking on behalf of the homeowners that the planning board, this planning board, would allow them to simply administratively modify this building envelope, and form some sort of amendment or a letter, that then they can then go to the bank with literally, or record the registry of deeds against this lot. It's up to the board to decide whether the change they suggest arises to some level that you need to modify your decision in the form of a hearing. You always have that condition that the plan shall be, you know, as per plans, unless the planning board allows it to, a de minimis change. So the board has to decide whether this rises to some level where you need to hear about it, and apply the butters and go through the entire special permit process again.
So basically, this is just a condition of approval, it's not based on the bylaw?
That's correct.
And it would appear that the only difference was they wanted maybe 25 feet back from the pond, or from the roadway, and now we have almost 21. That seems to be the only difference, is there?
Right. I have a question. If I'm reading this correctly, it looks like there, if this deck is well into the 10-foot setback, that's normal, is that what I'm seeing here? I see this 13-foot line, and the cutting off the corner there, is this?
That's a planter, no?
Yeah.
Is it landscaping and not a building?
Correct.
Okay, the word deck there is what got me confused. It said deck.
Oh, you're thinking this whole thing's a deck.
Yeah, well, from where I see the plan, it says deck on it, so I'm saying we can't give them relief from a 10-foot.
No, they're not looking for any zoning relief.
Okay.
They're just looking for relief from the condition imposed by the 1986 planning board. But they're not really looking for relief, they're looking to adjust the area. They're not looking to be skewed, so they just want to make.
So this existing first-story deck is landscaping?
No, that is a deck, but that's at the rear part of the property.
No, but I'm talking from the setback, I see a setback line coming 13 feet, and we have a 10-foot setback normally, and it looks like it's a lot more than three feet you're asking, unless I'm mistaken.
I'm sure I completely understand, so this is the 13-foot line that we're, so currently the homesite area is at 10, which is this dash line.
Make it 13.
We're asking to actually increase, increase that to 13 feet.
Okay.
In exchange for the ability to adjust the front yard.
I have a question.
So we're actually, you know, restricting them more on the side yard?
What, can you explain to me, what are those lines next to the planter? Is that a set of stairs?
Uh, yes.
And so then, where the stairs terminate, what's that other line that's, where Jim's indicating maybe it might be encroaching?
The original?
That's right there, that's what I'm questioning.
That's the corner of the planter. There's like a timber.
So that's landscaping?
So it's a landscape?
Correct.
It's not a structure?
Correct.
Okay, that's what was getting me confused. When I see a deck, I think of a structure, which is lot coverage and setbacks, and that's why I was confused.
It does not have to be inside the.
Yes, Ralph?
Right, so the stairway on the right side there, that.
Okay, so that's still in the setback, because you've moved it, you've moved your setback into being on the stairways. Is the stairway not considered area of a property? I mean, of a house, a footprint? It is or it isn't?
It's a landscape. It's a landscape stair, it's not a deck stair.
Where does it go?
It goes down the side yard, the side slopes.
Oh, it's just a sloping step, landscaping?
So it's landscaping, there's no structure, no footing, no.
Oh, we're thinking it went up to the top.
No.
So we're talking landscaping.
Okay, I understand now, but it certainly isn't obvious on the plan.
Ralph, that was my question, too, because when I see the word deck, it looks like a problem, that's not a deck.
That's correct. The deck is just this portion here, and then this part is the planter, and that's the landscape stair.
It's continuous, so.
Landscaping stairs, okay.
All right. That's what I was getting confused on. Yes, we're going to let Brian deal with this, I think.
Oh.
The question is here, is we're going to let Brian deal with this administratively, and as long as there's no problem with this zoning setbacks, we should let him clean this up, that's the question.
Okay, I was just going to say, it doesn't look any more detrimental to me, so I'm fine with it.
The question is, is whether we're going to let Brian deal with this administratively, or we're going to have a full-blown hearing, is that correct, Brian?
Correct.
So as long as we're not giving an encroachment less than 10 feet, and they've got to clean this up, everyone okay with that?
So I move that we allow staff to deal with this administratively, since there seem to be no further encroachments that we need to reopen a hearing about.
I think it's fine to allow staff to agree with it, but the board ought to say that they don't have an issue with this, so staff can move forward.
That's what the motion is.
That's the way.
We'll take your motion, now we're looking for a second.
It's fine, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Please, Jim, please ask for additional comments.
I'm sorry, Ralph. I'm sorry, Ralph, your comments.
Thank you. I believe that for the benefit of our recording secretary, the word homestead was used instead of homesite area. This is not, this is not a homestead issue, this is a homesite area.
So the board's motion, then, so I clearly understand, is to essentially vote that this plan need not rise to level of a hearing review by the board, and that you enable me to do the proper paperwork, so they can move it forward.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
How far out is the garage when they built it, out of feet-wise?
It's about five, five and a half feet.
Just up here, okay, thank you. Thank you. That title attorney messed up, that's it.
Yeah, I guess asphalt's working hard.
Doug, is this relative of yours? Brown was.
We're all related.
Okay. Which is why now we have asums. We're in good hands. Okay, committee reports. So Ralph, you got a committee report at all?
I do not.
I'm going left, right to left, any committee reports down here?
No.
How about you, Pat?
Well, we're closing in on finishing up the historic, the historical element for the local comprehensive plan. I'm hoping we will have, the only thing that's still remaining is that we're talking about the narrative. And as soon as we're totally settled on that, and it's just a precious few words that I think are going to be changed, we will have completed that. And at that point, we are finished with the elements. Then we go to pulling the whole comprehensive plan together and writing the introduction to the overall plan, which is going to be a monumental task as well, pulling that all together.
And we just have a few other little tidying up things to do with other elements, and we want to kind of cross-reference them to make sure that we use the same language and that we don't cover something twice, because we have talked about this whole web thing, and we don't want to replicate things within elements if we, and we've done that, we've moved some things that were in one element to another for, just for keeping it a little bit lighter.
And we have been to FCTV to talk about the accessory apartment bylaw, and that's going to be published sooner or later, but we do have a broadcast of that that could be shared with all the board members, so Brian, should I send it to you?
It's actually on the FCTV webpage.
It's already there?
It's already there.
Okay.
I looked it up today.
Good. I didn't know they had done that yet, so that was just last week, so I encourage you all to see it. I have sent it, a link to Doug Jones, so I wanted to make sure the selectmen know, I thought it'd be good to start as discussion items, basically for our joint meeting, things we could talk about. It's, that's all it is, is a request for information and discussion, it's just reaching out. The Enterprise wouldn't publish our letter to the general public, they said they don't do open letters, so we reached out to FCTV to do the same thing.
But I'd like to point out, too, that this bylaw, the accessory apartment, is an offshoot of the element, the housing element, and the housing demand study, that we had that as an action item, and we felt it was important enough that we get right on it, and I think, to our credit, we have done that.
And it's for next fall, next year's town meeting, it's not this upcoming, so we're out ahead on it. Miss Pat?
And just further information for the board, I did attempt. And just further information for the board, I did attend the ZBA hearing on Saturday morning with the turbines, and Paul was there too, and they were going to be bringing up the accessory apartment bylaw, but it wasn't on their agenda. So, they asked if I could come to their meeting Thursday night in case they had any questions, and I will not say that I speak for the board, I will simply be there as a resource if they need to have any information, but they have the FCTV presentation too, which really should answer all of their questions. But unless somebody thinks I, you know, if there's any objection to my being there, I certainly...
I would prefer to watch on television, I'd be glad to have you.
So would I. I'd rather be in my jammies watching on television, but, you know...
I'm already in my third meeting this week, so I just assumed not to a fourth.
But is this okay with the board that, because they did request...
Attend but not speak is the question.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Well, if they ask me a question, but I will not say that...
Make a presentation.
Or make any kind of determination or whatever, it's just a matter of, okay, well, this is what we discussed, so...
Well, I think we need to communicate with them, we do not want them to tear us apart on town meeting floor again, so I think this is really appropriate, we straighten, reach out to them and communicate, so we're on the same page.
Yeah, it would be similar to a representation at a precinct meeting.
Exactly. And then they will...
Answer questions, no presentation.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then they will, based upon their discussion, write a report back to us, as we've requested, about the bylaw, and any comments they have on it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do you have another committee report?
Yes.
Before we move on?
Well, I was speaker?
I am. I'm speaking louder for the, for my friends in the next room, they say I speak too softly.
Yes.
I've been attending the community preservation committee meeting on behalf of the planning board, and one of the most significant things that were voted recently is, at the request of the town, they've made the budget cycle the same as the town budget cycle, and what that means is that this year, there will not be any projects proposed for funding by town meeting, on community preservation recommendation, unless they're exceptional, or they're gonna lose funding, or something special comes up, and it'll be coming into next spring. What that means, it gives them an opportunity now to catch up on the number of projects that are a bit behind, particularly with some of the DPW projects that overwhelm them, but then they'll be on the same cycle as the, as the town. The other thing I just wanted to mention, as you were, I've been asked to be a part of the evaluation committee for Springbars Road. That process is moving forward, there's another meeting tomorrow, I'm not sure what the status of it is right now, but basically, there's a team put together to look at various aspects of the project, and there have been interviews with the proponents about, oh, well, maybe ten days ago. So, that project is moving at least through the, through the town review, and I think the planning will probably have an opportunity to address it, as well as how it was selected. Not at liberty to get into all the details, but there have been progress on that, and they are moving forward.
Well, EDIC has great news, I'll be real quick, we met with the selectmen last night, and they approved all three things we need to move forward with the solar field on the landfill. It's gonna bring, it's a great asset for the town, I estimate it adds about thirteen million dollars if it was, if it could be sold because of the cash flow that it generates. It should generate total savings in taxes and everything, six, starting off in the mid-six-fifties, and then if we can expand it to another two megawatts, we can, might get it up to eight or nine hundred thousand dollars of total benefit, a year to the town for twenty years, on a landfill that has been dormant and costing us eighty thousand dollars a year. So, it's a good result, a lot of hard work by the EDIC in a long, long negotiations with the selectmen, but I think we came to a fair and just agreement on it, so we're pretty happy with that.
Could you mention the agreement on the cost-sharing of the proceeds? That was the big issue last night.
Yeah, we, we were looking for, the EDIC wanted a ten percent share, basically, and the selectmen wanted us, basically to give us a five percent share, but they agreed to basically around numbers, around ten percent for the first three years, and go back down to five, but let us come back and renegotiate if we need more money in the future, so that's, that was okay.
Well, the question I had, does that cover your upfront cost to get the project going?
Yeah, we, the way we did it, we were getting, yes, answer your question, it does.
That was important.
No, it, we were getting everything back, and the idea, the biggest reason why we're doing it, because the EDIC doesn't have any funding, and it was gonna go away, if we, it was eventually just gonna go away, so we, our whole approach to this project was to find something that would generate revenue for the EDIC, and I think we have, and the selectmen are working with us, so we're pretty happy with it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's a big project, and there's, there's more to come, because the second phase of the project is, Citizens Energy is gonna build another two megawatts someplace in town and generate the electricity and give half of it away to Falmouth residents for free. They're gonna identify two hundred needy families and hook them up to the grid and give them a thousand dollars a year in electricity. So, that's, that was really the reason why they were basically even on all the bids, there was a couple companies who were all the same, and citizens had two overwhelming things. One, when we asked them if they had any lawsuits, they said, "No, they don't have any," and many of their competitors have been embroiled in lots of lawsuits, and two, they said, "By the way, we're also gonna build another power plant and give away half the profits to two hundred needy families in Falmouth," and those are, that's one of the components when we put out the bid, that it had a benefit for the, for the residents of the town as whole, so that's why we chose them, the selectmen now have agreed, and we're moving forward.
I understand the first phase is four megawatts, and the second phase may or may not be too additional.
Well, yes. There's a couple reasons, it's kinda complicated. The town determined that they did not want to go for all six megawatts, that they only wanted four, they were trying to make sure that they cover their other needs in generation of power, and they may or may not need it, we don't know, it depends on the future of many things that are going on, and other energy components, but we feel that our deal was so good that we can get other towns to buy it if they don't want to, and if we can get it built, and get the tax credits and everything approved by the state, then we'll sell it to, the EDIC will be selling the power to other towns, because we can only do a municipal, it's a municipal deal, and then we're gonna have to go back to the selectmen and recut that deal again, and do a, do a income-sharing approach on it, but in the long run, we feel we're gonna get to the six megawatts, because it's an unbelievable site, it's a natural, there's two really compete, components that made us reach for the six. One is, there's a limit to ten megawatts that any municipality can do, and Falmouth already has the wind turbines and other things that are, generate a lot, but they're determined that the EDIC is also a municipality organization, so by us applying for it, now instead of Falmouth having only ten watts, ten megawatts, we get twenty, so, because the EDIC is now considered another municipal entity, so that was a big deal, and so, we're moving forward on that. So, if in fact the federal government and the states approve more tax credits, we will expand it to being a total of six megawatts and start generating a million dollars a year total benefit to town. Total benefit means electrical savings, rent paying both the EDIC and the town, taxes, and adding them all together, it's, cash flow-wise, it's twenty million dollars if the whole thing gets built. If it just stays where it is, it's about fourteen or fifteen million dollars. So, either way, it's a lot of money on a landfill.
Very interesting discussion last night with five members of the board. I wasn't sure what they were referring to sometimes, but I think I worked that in the end.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Is the EDIC gonna have a press release about this, because this is a really significant thing that people in this town need to know about?
Oh, yeah. I think you'll see a lot of it, and then, both Paul and I are also involved with the EDIC on the bus station, and that's moving forward.
Falmouth Station.
Falmouth Station. We're still working on the design, and I attended, I got to attend the meeting today, I haven't been going for a while, because I could not handle both the workload from the solar field and the bus station, but now that one's done, I stopped in and went, and we're, we're moving forward on that as well. So, the EDIC is...
If I can just add to that.
Doing a good job.
There was a public hearing on the twenty-first of January, it was fairly well-attended, and there were some very, very good comments. At that time, the architect presented his concepts, what he was thinking of. Unfortunately, it was the same time as one of the wind turbine hearings with the zoning board of appeals, so it didn't attract the type of attendance like you would've thought, but there will be another one coming up, and I think the comments from the public were very well done, and they were taken into consideration by the architect.
Still in the design phase, so it's a lot, lots of change in there. Okay. Any other committee reports? All set? General correspondence, I saw one letter, nope, what did I miss?
Joint meeting.
Joint meet?
Agenda items.
Okay, joint meeting agenda items, I'm sorry. Do we have an agenda for that?
Yeah. On the exact page. I wonder what that means. I guess that's a draft, is that what that means?
Sitting on it.
Says DRA on the other page.
I'm trying to figure out what the R A means.
Radio frequency.
So, we got Bike Ways, Davis Straits Plan, that's the big one, and, and Scranton Avenue Corridor Study, future, and then the accessory. I could tell you on my point of view, I'm gonna try to get them, I really think we should, and I've said it several times, and they've turned it down when I've asked, but I think we should be really going from Shore Street all the way to Davis Straits in the view of that plan.
Which one are you referring to?
The Cape Cod Commission.
Oh, Davis Straits?
Yes.
Yeah, we've discussed that.
It ends at Scranton, and the last joint meeting, and other times, I really think that we should revisit from Shore Street all the way down, but we'll talk to them about it, that's...
Just so the board understands, the commission staff will be there, obviously, it's a plan that has stalled, and now they're gonna start it up again, they really wanna hear from you, at least on that section of the roadway from the T-ticket lights, you know, the stop-and-shop lights, to about the Scranton Ave area. So, I'll have a, some aerials up on the screen here for you, and, you know, if it's, if T-ticket highway from the administration building to stop-and-shop is zone B two, this whole area is zone B two down to Heights Road, you know, what do you envision? You're not envisioning, you know, business two-type zoning uses, what does this planning board want to see? And that's what the commission staff wants to vision with you, they wanna hear what you have to say.
So, we have talked about transfer of, in the local comprehensive plan group, and some, sometimes this, talked about transfer of development rights, and maybe going to the plaza and read, read this, is that the time to bring it up?
That's the time, this, they wanna, they wanna hear your ideas as a, as a planning board for this area.
Right.
Eventually, are we gonna march ourselves down towards Shore Street and the green and Highfield, everything in time?
So...
But they, we all have...
So, this is an opportunity to bring up that vision that we've had with them?
Yeah, but we haven't had a real full-blown discussion.
No, we haven't with our board yet.
That would be good.
But, but... Would be good.
But we'll do it, we'll talk to you as a board.
You'll be there as a board.
We'll do as a board.
You're as a board, and here's some ideas, the local planning committee has some ideas, the selectman might have some ideas, but you will be there as a board?
As a board, so everyone gets to weigh in, it's not one person's opinion, it's our board.
It's a visioning statement, and they'll be coming back to you.
And they'll give us feedback if they, at that time, and then we can deal with it.
Right. And the Bike Ways plan is, is the plan that the Bike Ways committee did with the Cape Cod Commission, and they wanna get that in front of the two boards.
Both boards at the same time.
And the command associates will update you, we added to their contract, the intersection at Scranton Avenue, it wasn't part of the original contract, so they're gonna come back and show you some design concepts for that, for that intersection. If you recall, from their initial meeting with you back in October or November, if you get exactly when, that intersection was left out, so they've gone back to look at that very critical intersection, they've come up with some pretty interesting ideas, but I'll let them brief the board.
Now, it's just the plan, I remember seeing a preliminary plan, did we see some rotaries on this section of road?
Right, you saw the plan that went from Heights Road all the way down to the administration building, they had various cross-sections, they had roundabouts.
Roundabouts.
They were looking at a signalizing intersection at Dillingham Avenue and Springbars, they're looking at Springbars eastbound one-way, so they're gonna come back with a final version of that, but at least now, they want to bring you up to speed what they think are some design concept at this intersection, and that stretch of road down to, from Scranton Avenue down to Heights Road.
Yes, Paul?
I think these three items are very, very important, and the meeting is at nine o'clock on Saturday. Are we going to have some briefing materials to be able to review before this meeting?
Yes, you have the Bike Ways plan already, if you want, we'll have hard copies there for you, we'll email it out again to you if you want, make sure you have that. The Davis Straits plan and study is truly a visioning, I can give you their scope of work, but they wanna hear from you, your ideas about land uses along that stretch of road.
Excuse me, so all we're doing is, is look at the scope of work, and then reacting to what they present in accordance with the scope of work?
No, you're...
Is that right?
The scope, the scope of work for the Davis Straits planning study is the only document I have right now for you to look at. As part of that scope of work, the kickoff meeting is a visioning meeting with the planning board and selectmen, so it's really just that, it's step one in that process, so it's really not much I can give you in the way of briefing papers, but, and the command is supposed to get me some information tomorrow, I can try to get that out to you a little beforehand, their design concepts for Scranton Ave, I wanna see them before it gets in front of the boards.
Nice to have that media, information before the meeting.
Agreed. One, you have, two, it's a kickoff, so there won't be any, and three, I am working on.
So, Doug, on future agenda items for joint meetings, I think we'd like to talk about some resiliency there.
Well, I thought we had agreed that we would talk about it at this one.
This one, I know, but it's not on it.
Also, this meeting tonight, we were gonna talk amongst ourselves, so we'd be prepared for that discussion on Saturday, so we keep getting pushed to the back of the bus.
I did bring it up, and they're looking at after the election, another meeting with this board and selectmen, and I can pretty much assure you, we'll be on the agenda.
And at our last joint meeting, the selectmen had agreed to do some homework and research, and be prepared to tell us some stuff about coastal resiliency that they had come up with.
Well, let me see what I can do.
Well, I mean, I should at least keep it...
Do we have time? Forty-eight hours, right? Do we have time to adjust it?
We'll post it tomorrow.
See what, see what we can do. See if we can at least broke the subject.
It doesn't have to be an in-depth discussion, just, I'd like to keep it in the forefront because...
Well, how about, how about we do the updates, we're gonna update people on the draft accessory apartment bylaw, how about we update resiliency?
That sounds like a good idea, and I think until we're, from now to the, whatever future, anytime we get together with the selectmen, it should be on the agenda.
And I'd like to, is this the time for future agenda items, or is this future agenda items with selectmen only?
This is the joint, we're still in the discussion of the joint.
You guys discuss the future agenda items.
Between us and them.
Right. What they wanna see and what we wanna see.
Okay. Well, that's certainly the main one, for me.
So, I would ask you all to go on our website and look at the, the link to the discussion on the draft accessory apartment bylaw, so you have seen that, I think you've heard it all before, but... it all before, but it'd be good if everyone had just seen it, we worked on it, it took us a, we've been working on it a lot, but we sat down and talked for 25 minutes, and there was a cut that worked, we didn't, they didn't edit, we just did it pretty quick. But it is representative of a fair amount of work that we've done as a board, and discussions that we've had. I think, I think every, we tried to represent every comment we have heard from all of you, and we did say that this is, it is what it is, we're just talking about our, our start right now. So I want to make sure that you're, you've seen it, and if you disagree with it, let's get it straightened out, so we're not arguing in front of them.
And that's to do with the, which item?
This is the accessory apartment bylaw.
Okay.
We, we hammered it out the last meeting.
But I think the biggest thing about that, bringing it up with them, is is not really this board to discuss anything, is to get their feedback.
Right, that, well, that's why we did it.
I mean, and, and because we don't know, we haven't heard back from really anybody.
No, we haven't.
So what we said could be agreed upon, some of it, maybe none of it, we, we don't know that, so.
But Brian, we, we've sent the letter out to how many different organizations?
So far, it's quiet.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Okay, and I took the liberty.
Although I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I know there are folks working on it, I know there's some housing advocacy groups out there working on comments, I know there are other boards are looking at it, so I think you're going to get some.
Okay, and I've said every time, it's now on our website, so is our draft plan on the website, and if anyone's interested, they can go get it, and that's what they should do. And I have used social media to tweet it out to the five or six people that follow me, so they all have it, but, and I, as I say in it, I, if, unless we change it drastically, I think at some point it would be a great thing to send to town meeting members, so get everyone, to get them involved in the discussion, so with, everyone's prepared for town meeting, when and if we bring it forward.
Great.
Okay, that's the joint meeting discussion. We've already covered the correspondence from SALT, we don't need, that's the only thing in the file. Okay, now we're on future agenda items for this board.
I got one.
Yes.
Coastal Resiliency.
Hey. You're stepping on Doug's toes here.
No, he's helping me, good.
Now let's do it, see?
So I have one, so in reading the planner's handbook that I got from Brian, it said that whenever you're discussing issues that are in a jurisdiction of Conservation Commission, they should be included in the discussion, so when we talk about coastal resiliency, we should be doing it with them, or at least in concert with them. So I'd like to invite them for a joint meeting to reinvigorate that discussion.
I think that's a great idea, because we did invite them to a local comprehensive plan meeting, and it was very fruitful, and I think.
The better ones.
It was, actually, we really covered some ground, I think that's a great idea.
All right.
Might be a more appropriate coming maybe from chairman to chairman?
Yes. Invitation, yeah.
Invitation, so.
Very good.
I'll, I'll let you reach out on that, Jim.
I will.
Okay.
Other items?
So that simplifies.
No, I think you'll find it'll be very enlight, enlightening.
Oh, yeah.
We had a great meeting with Betsy and.
Jen.
Jen, and what I thought was going to be a difference of opinion was not, and it was really amazing, so I think it was very good, and it should be helpful. Next is, next meeting, it's Saturday. Now, do we, we're set for?
Nine.
For nine, everyone good with that? I'll be, I get up at 5:30, I'll be waiting for this meeting.
I know.
I'll be just walking up to that street, waiting to go someplace, so. Is nine good?
Some folks are coming from Barnstable and Downey.
We have to be fair, I know, I'm not going to tailor to my particular needs.
The next planning board regular meeting will be March the 22nd, we have some preliminary plans, it's more site plans are starting to come in, so they are in the office if you want to stop by, take a look at them, there's a rather large preliminary plan off of Sandwich Road, and there's a plan for Pier 37, and some other, one other plan that escapes my mind for a moment, so we're getting some plan reviews in, but I'll be your next meeting, the 22nd, on the decision for the Dunkin' Donuts and other ones.
Okay. 22nd.
Okay. All good?
I move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No discussion, Ralph. We're done.